Call this being fair kind of foolish, being ordered to start the pledge allegiance play. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You all have a copy of the minutes preceding meetings, recommendations or corrections? If none, entertain the motion to approve the minutes.
So moved, second.
Been moved and second, approve the minutes preceding meeting, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is the new county attorney, as been stated before, A.J., who was our attorney, resigned and took the job in Wayne County. The county council hired Christopher here last, their last being for the attorney for the council, so we need to appoint attorney for the commissioners. I would entertain a motion that we hire Christopher as the attorney for the county commissioners.
Mr. President, I would move that we hire Mr. Chris Appel as our attorney for the commissioners.
Second.
Been moved and second, we hire Mr. Appel for the attorney for the county commissioners. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried.
Well, thank you.
Do you have anything for us this morning?
Um, no, that needs to be addressed right now.
Okay, thank you. Department head reports?
Good morning.
Morning.
We've been mainly doing chip sealing, we've got Barton's area done, we're moving into Zane's area, we're starting up the vent building, moving south. Hopefully, we'll have it all done before the bear starts. We should have it all done before the bear starts, well, not before the bear starts, before school starts. It won't be done by the time the bear starts, because I figure we've got at least another three weeks before we get done. That's all I've got.
Any questions for Jay?
Thanks, Jay.
Thank you, sir.
Hang on, Jay, real quick, how often do you guys do the robe cut backs? For the, I know your machine's been down, like the...
The brush cutter?
Yeah.
It's working again, but with everybody out chip sealing, I don't really have anybody put in it right now, because I'm kind of watching who I put in, so I don't tear it back up again.
I just got a few calls with people saying, right, I'll meditate.
Soon as we get called up, we'll start cutting them all back, because we want to get them cut for the buses and everything, so.
Right.
It's usually a full-time job once they start cutting them.
Right. Thanks, Jay.
Maintenance, Bill Gray.
What are you doing? I have one quick thing. I got ahold of Johnson, we talked last meeting about the pipe in the ceiling, and the price was $1,073.01 to do the pipe, and I went back to him after I spoke with you about doing the whole pipe all the way across, and it took $2,026.01. So, that's two days of labor, yeah, of labor. And we're going to set up all the scaffolding, take the ceiling down, we'll do that all in-house, and that saves the county doing that. So, we'll get it ready and schedule it, and get it done before cold weather hits.
And you're...
We don't have to put a new ceiling yet?
No, no, I'll replace what was damaged.
Okay.
We just got to take a lot down to get the scaffolding up, and we've got to be careful not get the main...
Not much damaged in the ceiling?
No, probably maybe 10, 12 tile, and we'll replace those, put everything back up.
Okay. If you need help, sure, and ask Michelle for some.
Yeah, yeah, and I probably will when we start carrying scaffolding up. We're going to put a piece of plywood across those files up there, so if we have to get up on them, we'll be okay.
You're going to be there to oversee the maintenance and all that good stuff?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, I'll be right there.
And they don't, there's probably not any kind of guarantee with having put this in?
And no, it's hard to, you know, it'd be hard for them to guarantee that, but they're going to, you know, they'll go put it back together, test it, and make sure everything's right with it, if there's anything wrong, they'll take care of it.
Have we figured out why it went bad to start with?
I'd say probably just the decaying silicone that they use, high temp silicone. You know, it's possible...
Is this something we can expect every three or four years then, or?
Barton, I don't know, I can't say for sure.
That'd be heck of a...
It's just a bad design, anytime you put something above a ceiling with water, it's a bad design.
Yeah, I know.
You guys are aware of that, so. So, we're just, he's going to, he's going to put the best silicone in there, they make, the high temp silicone they make in there.
And hope for the best.
And hope for the best, and try to get it tilted to where if it does condensate, it'll run back toward the boiler and not out toward the ceiling. That's what we're going to try to do. We're going to check every joint all the way across. Of course, after it goes across, it's about center where we're at now, so once it goes all the way across this ceiling, then it goes all the way down and out the outside wall. So, we might, we've got to be real careful when we get to that joint, not to shake it a whole lot and bust something else with it, so.
Have we already approved that expenditure?
I'm sorry?
Have we already approved that?
No, not this one.
No, not that one.
No, not this one, this one here.
This, this additional?
Yeah, well, this is the...
Like I said, the last one I come back with was just doing the first joint.
Right.
And you guys said, no, let's do, let's do it all, so that's why it was a little hard.
Well, then, you need to prove additional expenditure, so you go ahead and get it fixed.
The $2,026.
Right.
And I will move to approve the expenditure of $2,026.01 for the proposal by Johnson Controls to repair the problems.
Been moved and second, we approved the expenditure, so you go ahead and get the problem fixed, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried.
Okay, you got a copy of this, you can sign for me?
Right here.
Okay, okay.
Bill, I have a question.
Yeah.
What's the status on the elevator and the annex?
Called in, they're getting it, definitely getting it repaired, so.
So, what was the cause?
Well, we don't know yet.
Don't know yet.
Oh, the cost, you mean?
Cost.
No, no, we won't know until it actually comes up, and then we'll, we can get down to the pit and see if weight was the problem, or if age, or whatever. We'll know once we get it up, get the car up and get down in there to see, and I'll be, I'll be there with that, too, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So, we might need to make some instructions on people using that about.
Well, I'm thinking weight might be a problem. I don't know, it's not used, it's not used a whole lot, so, I don't know, until we get it up to see what happens, but I'll let you guys know, as soon as I know what I know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ben?
Good morning.
Morning.
As part of your capital improvement plan that you accepted earlier this year, I had put together a proposal for a security camera surveillance system for the courthouse. This system would be custom-built by myself, capable of handling up to 64 cameras. Initially, we are looking at purchasing 33 cameras. These cameras are, a portion of them are indoor/outdoor rated, some of them are just indoor for the ones that are only going to be indoors. They are day/night cameras capable of recording in zero illumination with IR buds on them to make up for that, and they are capable of 1,944 lines of resolution, to give you an idea, that is double a high-definition TV. So, these are very high-resolution cameras. I know in our initial discussions, Mr. Jackson, one of his concerns was cameras are no good if you can't see what's on the recording.
Right.
So, these cameras with the system that I would build to record on should alleviate all such concerns as you could get as granular as seeing a detailed lapel on someone's jacket, for example. So, along with a camera system, there are a lot of peripherals that go into it, you need a new network switch that can actually power the cameras, I'm budgeting about 8,000 feet of cable to go to all these cameras, patch panel RJ45 bins for the cable, you need a large monitor to view the cameras, you need a computer for that monitor, we need a new server monitor inside the actual server room toward the recording software. And the other end of this project is a backup, off-site backup solution, that would be off-site in a disclosed location that is secured with its own surveillance system and alarm system for our security that could handle up to 24 terabytes of storage. We'd also utilize a wireless link to connect to that off-site location. This just meets some of our requirements for backing up our data in a secure fashion off-site, so if there was some sort of disaster here at the courthouse, we would not lose our data. Total project cost is $29,402.20 plus shipping. I apologize, I couldn't get a firm number from some of the vendors on their shipping costs for what we were ordering. Do you guys have any questions? But I believe the original allocation was $30,000 for the security project, so we are under that.
And those prices, you had to take quotes for the different items, did you?
Correct, yes, and on page two is a breakdown by vendor, who we would like to go with. Again, the way we were able to get such high-end cameras at a reasonable price was utilizing some online vendors, usually we can get better pricing going that way. So, one type of camera that we're going to get two units, 10 units of is $334 per unit, the other unit is, which we're going to get 23, is $352 per unit. So, again, the capability of recording such high resolution at such a price point, you really can't beat that, and we looked around, they were double other places, so I'm very happy with the price that Surveillance.com was able to provide for us.
And this is going to provide cameras in all the offices?
If that is the commissioner's pleasure, absolutely.
With the number of cameras that you...
We might have to, yes, yeah, we'd be okay. We've budgeted, we've allocated for all offices that requested it in our initial walkthrough, and also any office that exchanges money, our primary concern being if monies being exchanged is probably a good idea to record it. So, those 33 cameras are...
We're pretty well covered, I think.
I believe so, and you're going to get all hall coverage as well with that 33 camera system.
You'll have to go through the ceiling to put the cameras in and take the files out and such.
Yes, yes, and there, above the ceiling, there's about two to three feet of clearance, and cable runs, so when they did the initial construction, there are loops where we can put that, so it's out of the way, and we're not going to just run it across the false ceiling, it'll actually be up in the, where it's supposed to be.
And the installation's going to be done in-house?
Yes, sir, yeah.
Where are you going to house the recording units and everything like that?
The recording unit will be upstairs server room, behind a locked door, it's incapable of being unlocked, it's the only way to, you can unlock it with a key, but you can't leave it unlocked, so we're pretty secure up there. Do you want to know where the backup, the off-site backup solution is as well?
Just wanted to know, it'll be here?
It'll be, yes, there it is, yeah, and it is a eight-terabyte unit that will record weeks, I'd be confident saying weeks' worth of information at that resolution, so.
And you would be the person to have, to have access to that?
I would have the system access level for this administration purposes, but I leave it up to you, who you want to actually have viewing privileges on that.
Okay, whether we can talk about that later.
Sure.
Right. And the off-site is just north of us?
Yes.
Well, we put it, we put it in the capital plan, and everybody's concerned about the security, including, including the courts, I think, we need to go ahead and get this done, that will solve a lot of our security problems right there, not all that everybody wants, but...
I will say, Judge Butch was very happy that we were moving forward in this direction, so. I know there's been some incidents even in her office area, that she thinks a surveillance system could have alleviated quickly, people would have known they were on camera.
Right.
We'll need to do it, and because this is to the plan that you approved this year, it wasn't in the budget when it was approved last year, so we'll probably have to do an additional for this, so, and I can, I have enough time to get that for August.
Okay, Ben?
Sir?
We have a camera in the courtrooms?
No, there was some question as to the legality of having a camera in the courtroom. Judge Erdl looked into that, the issues came down to whether who owned it, who controlled it, who was monitoring it, and we kind of let it drop at that. Again, with this system, it's fully capable of expanding, so for an additional $350, we could put a camera in a courtroom if counsel says that that's okay.
Did Judge Butch go along with that?
Uh, yeah, obviously, I think, I don't want to speak for her, but if she was agreeable to doing that, and we were told that it's legally okay, then, you know, of course, we could move in that direction.
The only thing is, at some point, they have juvenile court in there.
Well, I would think that would be up to the judge to decide whether it's proper to do or not.
Right.
If they want it, we put it in, if they don't, sure.
But it's not being, it's not being monitored, you're okay as long as it's not being monitored. If it's just being recorded, then that's okay, but then the most dangerous times in court are family court night and the days when DCS and et cetera are there, so if she's agreeable with it, or if she wants one, we can add one later.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. You motion?
I think we do.
I will move to approve $29,402.20 for the camera surveillance system, as presented by Mr. Ben.
Second.
Been moved and second, we approve the project as presented by Ben, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried.
If you don't have anything else for you, that's all I have for you today.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Ben, when are you going to get started on that, sorry?
Since we'll have to appropriate the monies through council at the August meeting, once we have the appropriation, we can begin ordering. I would expect anywhere two to three weeks for delivery of all items, at that point, we're looking at probably the end of August when we're getting going. There's going to be a lot of labor, it's a lot of cable to run. My plan will be to get the recording system up running first, get all the peripherals in place, and then as we start running cable, get cameras hooked up, and so we'll slowly come online, so we'll start getting coverage as soon as possible.
Okay.
So, first camera up, I'd say by September 1.
So, probably by the end of the year, we'll be all done?
I would hope by mid-October, we would be all done.
Good, good.
I have another, another thing, will you, are you going to be, will you need to utilize the county credit card to pay for that, and if we do, we will probably have to increase that limit, remember?
Yes, we will, and yes, one of the things I've been working with on the Surveillance.com, who is using, who would want to use for the camera units, is their policy is credit, credit card only. I explained to them, you know, as a government entity, we have to take delivery possession before payment, and so I've been working back and forth with them, I did not get a final answer from their owner yet, though.
Okay.
So, if they refuse, our two options are to pay a little bit more per unit on the cameras with a different vendor that will take a purchase order, or to use the credit card.
I'm thankful that my, they figured out how to do it.
I'd imagine, it's a $12,000 order for that company, so.
I think probably just to be safe, we probably need to just go ahead and do a separate, maybe do a separate motion to approve him to, you know, to allow us to increase the credit card limit so that it could be put on the credit card if it's going to save us money.
So, moved...
Second.
Been moved and second to allow the credit card limit to be raised so Ben can, can purchase the equipment, through that means, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried.
And just for your information, the places where we might perhaps have to use the credit card, that's totaling approximately $16,000.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, now we come down to county attorney again, Christopher, do you got anything?
We're not, this is...
Counsel representative, I don't...
Shirley.
Shirley?
I think you were with us last meeting, we're working on a budget, meeting with the different department heads in preparation for the reception of the office from the separate attorneys. So, as you all know, there's discussion about the, how to best assist you with the county highway department.
I guess I'm a little there, county highway. Okay. Mayo?
No, I really, well, wait, I do have, I do have something, handle whatever. I, John Walters brought in his bill for the restoration at Old Orange, and he brought in just a couple, or pass those down, before and after pictures.
Looks nice. Looks real nice. We had already approved that expenditure?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did.
And that's all?
Yeah. Oh, wait, no, I'm so sorry, I say that. Well, I put this in here last week, and I think you all did receive letters from Brad Wilson about our insurance, and there are also two other letters that he gave me that, one talks about the public officials liability, employment practices, liability coverage is provided on a claims-made basis, and if, and if we were aware of any potential claim related to either of these policies, we needed to report that to the prior carrier before September 1 of 2013, they should disclose a potential claim that you are aware of will result in no coverage from the prior or current carrier if we fail to report to the prior carrier before September 1. I, I didn't, I couldn't think of anything, but we need to...
Make a survey, see if anybody's got any ideas.
Yeah, the other, the other was concerning the county's workers, I mean, workers' comp policy provides $25,000 medical coverage for volunteer work on behalf of the county. The condition of this coverage is that the attached list be completed and submitted to the workers' comp carrier. He said, I am aware that currently there are volunteers involved with the operations at the cemeteries, please, please provide a list of these volunteers at the earliest convenience, so this coverage may be placed in effect.
I gave those to him yesterday.
Yes, and Zane brought, had a list of some of those, and I told him those just need to be forwarded on to Brad, so.
New business, opening of existing building proposals for a highway garage, we just have, we have one person sent a letter in. Flumm... Have you got that, Dave?
It's written.
Fullland, Flumm, who have a, who have a building up in the industrial park, have, they have called us, approved, saying here's a letter stating that they would like to negotiate with us on purchasing their building up there for a highway garage. Then one other individual told me that he would like to sell his building, I asked him to send a letter, and so far, he has not. Where we're going with that, we, we don't know yet, when I went to the council, the last council meeting, we had a big discussion about the highway garage, and some of those people thought we ought to go down there and fix the one we have, so we, we have to go, we have to make a determination whether we need, that can be fixed, should be fixed, or whether we buy a building or build new. So, it's kind of an ongoing deal. So, I would, you know, there's, I don't see what we can take, take any action on these building proposals at this time. Anybody have any comments on that?
Going to find out what you can spend, you know, we can't...
Yeah, the big problem is, the council needs to tell us what, how much money we can spend to either repair or get a new building, and so far, they haven't, they haven't solved it to do that. Next item on the agenda is Mount Zion Cemetery, Steve Mohler. Morning.
Everybody's familiar with Mount Zion Cemetery, I'll take it, correct? My proposal is, let me kind of start beginning, 1966, I went to school at Everton School, was in the Jackson Hot Shots 4-H Club. The 4-H leaders at that time asked the membership to do a, some kind of a project. My project at the time was Mount Zion Cemetery, we passed that on the school bus, my dad and I would pass it going fishing, going to creeks and stuff like that, looking for minnows. This particular cemetery at that time was growed up in weeds, brush, thistles, anything that you could think of, you couldn't even see the front gate. So, I went to the 4-H leaders, told them I had a project, and my project was to clean that cemetery, and so they agreed, so some parents got together, different ones of students got together, was involved in 4-H. We went out there on a couple of Saturdays and literally cleaned that cemetery like a golf course, cut everything out of it, cleaned it, mowed it, everything. And as you well know, today, 47 years later, I'm proud to see that it's still being done. I'm not doing it, but I'm glad to see it's done. I believe a lot in thanks to the newly formed Fayette County Pioneer Cemetery Commission, I think that's a wonderful group. My dream now, and it's been for years, I have started to toss this up for years, didn't know really to go with it, and as I get older, excuse me, I would like to see it done, I would like to see a flagpole put in that cemetery. I do not know why the cemetery, we lived, to back up a minute, folks, we lived about three miles from here, so I seen the cemetery pretty well regular. I would like to see a flagpole put into this cemetery, but this picture is of a flagpole to, my design of being somewhat rusty like the cemetery is. I personally don't really want to see a flagpole in there, that's, maybe not wording this right, but you got a 200 or 300-year-old cemetery, and you put in a brand-new $1,000 shiny flagpole, which you can see for miles, that just, to me, would collide with the atmosphere, the surroundings of the setting. So, my proposal would be to take this project on, I am from Fayette County, I have transferred to Rush County through marriage in 1984, but I graduated here, I was raised here, and so forth, went to school here, worked at D&amp;M, and so forth, so I still have a lot of heart here in the county. This flagpole here, to my design, if you will look at it, is a 55-gallon drum, plastic drum sunk in the ground with approximately two inches above ground, so it could be trimmed around. In the center of the 55-gallon barrel would be PVC pipe only as a support, down this bottom shaded area is a drain... Down this bottom shaded area is a drain, so that if there is any water, any moisture, anything would occur in around this cement, in around the pipe, it would drain out, keep it from doing any freezing dan- or damage to it. Then appropriate sized pipe would be painted and treated. Rust will emulize the work, yeah, eventually they all gonna rust, but hopefully it wouldn't be for many years. This flag pole would be 25 feet above ground, so we're looking approximately, barrels are about 42 inches high. 25 foot plus 42 inches, which would slide down into the barrel sleeve. With on top, if you look, part of it's off of here because of my printer, I'd like to put a solar light instead of an eagle or anything like that, I like to put some kind of a solar light on so that the light could stay up and it would retain as much light whenever, you know, nature's seem to be possible to give it light. This project, I believe, could be done at no cost to the county. No more material it would take, I believe it could all be donated. I believe, speaking a little ahead, I think if I go to the Pioneer Cemetery Commission, we can get volunteers, we can also get other volunteers, anybody who wants to support the project and, and help see this put in. I personally, if you're familiar with the cemetery, there's an old original gate there depending on what's there, I understand. But on just the inside to the left, if this flag pole was placed into that area, it could also be assessed, accessed from the road with a bucket truck if it ever, you know, something that need to be done. You and I were about anybody getting on ladders and blah, blah, et cetera, et cetera. When this project's done and completed, I would like to involve local VFW, American Legion and 48 and any other veterans organizations that would like to be involved. I am currently personally a PGR rider, which is Patriot Guard, Indiana Patriot Guard. We honor riding motorcycles and escort military funerals to the positive side. I'm an American Legion rider as well, sergeant at arms. So when this project's done, I would like to get with all the other interested people. My thought is to like to start out here in the front at the Veterans Memorial in front of courthouse, have a flag folding, have a flag service with 21 gun salute. Fold the flag military style. Put it on the back of my motorcycle, fly it. In escort with BGR, American Legion riders. Out State Road 1, over Erickson Road to the Mount Cemetery, or Mount Zion, excuse me, Mount Zion Cemetery. Present the flag to the pole and to the people out there. And do another military service, excuse me, military service out there at that time. Honoring the ones that live. I know that there's two Civil War veterans in there, I believe in the southwest corner. What else I'm not knowing, I'd like to do some work in really bringing up who is there and to date, and also would like to be able to find, I kind of doubt it, I don't think, and Lenny might help me with this, I don't think anybody's been there, laid to rest in the last 125, 30 years. So I don't know if there's anybody else left offspring of anybody in there. If there is, we would love to contact them and invite them, of course. I think that's all questions.
I think, I think it's a good, good idea, you know, where.
I eventually like, I personally wouldn't be doing it, but I think all cemeteries of some sort need a flag pole. Nowadays especially.
Well, if you, it says with donated funds. Unfortunately, with the way the money situation is these days, I mean, that would be, that would have to be the way it would be done. And we would appreciate any donated funds or any donated material to do this. When you dig 55 gallon drum, you're gonna, that's the other thing, you're gonna be way away from a grave, it's gonna be, because once you start digging, I don't know if you start getting into all kinds of problems with now you're digging in a Pioneer Cemetery and you're breaking laws, we, because I know, a 55 gallon drum is, what about that?
About 42 inches, I think, correctly.
So, I mean, I'm just trying to take precautionary measures that
Exactly.
we don't end up getting in a whole lot of trouble for something. I mean, it's a great idea, I just, if you can check into that, Lenny, and make sure that before we start, I'm not speaking for the other two, but if we agree to let this happen, just make sure that, and make sure that no laws will be broken as far as digging because they're very, the state is very, very, very adamant about disturbing Pioneer Cemeteries for any reason whatsoever as far as new construction projects.
This, in respect to that, also I, I've thought about, my dad took a three inch water pipe one time, 30 foot long, sunk it straight down in the ground with no supportive, like a fence post, about, still about four feet packed with rocks and planted just like you were gonna plant a tree. 52 years later, still standing there with no problems whatsoever. So what I'm saying is if we don't use the barrel, maybe we could resort to something like that. I'd just like to see the flag pole in conjunction with the Pioneer part of the cemetery.
Well, I'm, I'm in agreeance with the fact that cemeteries with veterans need a flag pole. I mean, like I've always said, if it wasn't for them, we don't, might all be speaking a different language right now, but the whole point is, is I just want to make sure we're, we do it the legal way and we don't
Oh, exactly.
jump in and start doing stuff without asking.
I understand that.
Zane?
Yes?
We're gonna get ahold of VNR, genie, at the state level to see if there's any specifications at their level. As far as directing a flag pole, which they may have those specifications.
Okay.
We can just waiting based off your pleasure and we will get that information from them because they may have a certain standard that they, they want them to find their cemetery support and entertain that.
Right, okay.
So, will you just look all that up and then the next time, so when you get on the agenda for the next meeting as far as to bring in your report on how things are going, you can kind of give us an update on what you found out?
Yes, sir.
Other than that, I think the project's admirable.
I'm sorry, sir.
I think the project is admirable, we just, we just want to make sure it's done right.
Right. I have probably that and I agree 100%.
You check into that and report back with us and see where we go.
I'll, if it's all right with Lenny, I'll work with you guys, through them, kind of,
That'd be great.
keep in touch, that way, okay?
That'd be great.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Fair Board, Ted McQuinney.
Good morning.
Morning.
To request, on behalf of the Fair Board, I have two requests. In past years, the first one is that we've, the county highway and the commissioners have permitted us to use the packer for like packing the tractor pulling track and stuff like that. Generally, they left it up there, didn't need it, so they left it up there all weekend in the infield of the racetrack. But this year, we wouldn't necessarily need it the two straight weekends, we would just need it the last weekend for the tractor pull because there will not be an antique tractor pull, which was always the first weekend of the fair. So that's one request. And then in previous years, the commissioners have permitted the county highway to haul gravel up for us to put on the fairgrounds. This year, we would request about three loads of, of a limestone, or a landscape stone from IMI down on 121, brought to the fairgrounds. And one be placed in front of expo hall where we could freshen up the gravel that's been there for, for years. And then two on the backside where the stone is between it and the blacktop drive that goes down between expo hall and the cattle barns in that area. So that's the areas we would.
You're talking about the fair board buying the gravel and the highway just hauling it out for you?
IMI charges us for the gravel, all the county is responsible for, just the trucking that up and that.
I have a significant problem with that, for the good of everybody in the county. And the other item, the other item was the, what was the first item you talked about, about the packer?
Oh, the date on the packer would be the last Saturday, be the Friday or, they generally, Jay's always brought it up on Friday. Whenever, I mean, we could use it all week long, but we don't have to, you know, I mean, we just need it for the tractor pull on the third, so we'd need it up there on the second.
I'll make a motion to approve Mr. McQuinley's request.
Second.
Been moved and second approved request for both items from Mr. McQuinley, my full favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda I had put on there, concerning us hiring an engineer for inspection of the highway garage, as most of you know, we had a big discussion at the last council meeting. We was originally gonna talk to you about building a new, new highway garage or purchasing a building from, from somebody else and it was some of the people on the council thought we ought to go down there and repair the old garage we have, there's been some concerns about whether it is repairable or it's not, or it's safe to be in or it's not. So I, I think it's proper for the commissioners to hire an engineer referred to, go down and look at the garage, give us a report, put their stamp on there so we know what we have to work with or don't have to work with down there so we can see, get, getting a garage that the employees can work in. Called two or three different firms, Butler Furman has agreed to send an engineer down. They'll be here in your third year Friday if, if we desire to hire him for a cost of $2,500, not more than $2,500, possibly less, what they, what they get into. Do you like to speak the condition that would be proper or?
What they plan on doing is sending an engineer down to give a visual inspection of the highway department. And what they'd be doing would be going around, looking at all the members and going through the office and looking at everything. They will not be pulling a structural analysis, a structural analysis, they'd have to open up the walls and things like that, they're not going to go to that extent. This is just gonna be a visual inspection of the highway garage. And then he'll give a report afterwards, what he found and he'll give a recommendation on whether the highway garage can be repaired or whether it needs to be condemned and demolished.
Right. From what's been said in the last, in some of the council meetings, I think it's the only appropriate step the commissioners can take. We have to make sure that we have a safe place for the highway people to work down there and we sure don't want to have them for doing what we think's unsafe or can't be repaired. So I would, I would like for the commissioners to approve hiring Butler Furman to get this report so we know, so we can move forward with their, with their project. What we need to do.
I'll move that we hire Butler Furman for the structural engineer to look at the county highway garage and make his or her recommendation.
Second.
Been moved and second, we, we hired Butler Furman to get us the inspection. They're gonna do it this week and we'll get us a report back in the next week or two so we can move forward. My full favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote, most carry. Patriots' concerns? Ann?
It's really not a concern, but I had mentioned earlier that our computer contract is going to be up this year. I got a preliminary, and Mr. Appel, Anne Frost.
Nice to meet you.
Glad to meet you, thank you so much. I think Zane has a full copy of the contract for you to review.
I'm Frank Jackson.
Hello, Frank Jackson, Anne Frost, lovely to meet you today. This, this is just a very partial part, I asked Debbie to email you the full contract. It's basically, everything is the same.
Did you read that?
Nah, I just sent it this morning. I just got this on Friday. So.
When is this up, Ann?
Ah, they work with us, it's in like September, October. So, and I'm really very pleased with it, we, we lease all the equipment, we don't own it. They, for per document price, we pay that, and it's all paid out of perpetuation fund. We're, we'll have brand new equipment all the way across the board and all upgrades and software and it's the same price that we contracted for five years ago and actually the five years before that, so. But I'm not, I'm not asking you to approve it, I'm just giving you a heads up, this was one of my concerns and so.
Well.
I will email you the full contracts and Mr. Appel has the, or will get it if you have.
And have you, have you given Dan a copy of that?
Not yet.
If, if you would please, because he's our key director, we're gonna have him look at it and he has, he can give us his ideas of good, bad or indifferent.
Well, we, we don't own the equipment, they bring it all in.
I understand.
Yeah, if it goes wrong, they send us a brand new one.
I, I understand.
Yeah.
So that then, him and.
I'd be glad to get that to Dan, I'll email it to him.
Okay, when Chris look at it, then we can, we can take it up next month or there'll be plenty of time, right?
Fine.
Is any other Patriots' concerns?
Go back there.
Sir?
Yeah, my name is West Blakome, I just recently, my wife and I relocated to Fayette County. I would like to commission to consider a parks project I have in mind. Like no cost at all, the commission is going to be paid through, through employer and grants. I wanted to get started before I could fill out my pay for, apparently this is where I need to start, with commission approval to work at the park, I believe they referred to as 3 Mile.
The, down by, down by the bridge?
Down there, some recently transferred. My thoughts are just to my employer, Duke Energy, we have volunteers of service, we also have sweat equity grants for community projects and not for property or government entities. And I would like to apply for a $2,000 grant and this being from my employer, and it'd be no cost to the county to put gravel down there, support benches, bigger tables, all the heavy equipment, everything would be provided by myself and other employees to their personal equipment, the personal tractors, whatnot, I'm actually zero expense to the county.
Sounds like a good idea, man.
I never look at you towards the man.
Can I get his name, can I get your name again?
Uh, West Blakome.
Spell your last name.
T O M E Y.
So basically, you want permission so that from, so that you can apply for a grant from your employer, which is Duke Energy, to be able to basically upgrade Mayhem Park down there with gravel, et cetera, and that all the work we've done by it are you and or volunteers as well as you will provide the equipment and everything?
Yeah, and all volunteers will be covered under Duke Energy's supply, employers have liability insurance, so they'll get no liability to account if injury occurred.
How long, how long have you been here?
Um, June 14th, my wife and I relocated here in October, but I started.
Very, very community minded, I appreciate that, for years no longer than that. Especially since his employer is covering the liability, I have no problem with it, I make a motion to approve.
Yeah, we, what do we have to do, Chris, about them issue where we have no liability?
Yeah, so what, what will you guys be working under Duke Energy as an independent, like what will your? We're working under Volunteers in Action Program and that will be, we'll take pretty much the entire building over here from our office personnel, other than very minimal, just to keep the operational for the day, and all our line personnel, store personnel, mechanics, and we'll go to the work under there and we actually work the under paid working hours for this day of service. Anything other than that would be myself, maybe one or two other gentlemen doing some setup, but other than that, they'll actually be on Duke Energy payroll during the activities. So it'll be covered under the worker's.
Can you show us like some written work or documents that just shows that you'll be, this, this type of pro, volunteer projects okayed by Duke Energy?
Yeah, no problem, this was a, a first one, to make sure I'm approval before submitting the grant, the grant will be, a grant request will be submitted and I believe it will be looked upon at the first of the month, obviously my answer back on the 15th, and of course go from there, I can at that point have all the pay for provided at hopefully an exclamation meeting. And provide it to yourself as well, that way we'll make sure all eyes dotted, peace crossed. The only difference is when they fill the grant, the money will actually be given in the form of a check to county commissioner's office allotted for this, so that then the funds will be given to the commissioner's office to be used for this, so if we repurchase gravel by my, you know, it would just. So if we were to purchase gravel by my, you know, it would just need to be allotted for that, but it will be paid in advance.
Would you have to do another line item for that?
Yeah, yeah, we can do that. We would just set up a, a separate fund, put that money in, and then any expenditures you have would be paid out against that.
I think, I think it's great.
Yeah, I mean, as long as, I mean, it sounds like, have you done something like this before?
I've participated in with other companies I've worked with and we, I did participate in a project for the Mary Grant Bird's Exwerter, we built a bridge over there. And I'm, I discovered, plus they were actually built a structural bridge and we have our engineer with us as well, built a footbridge and we worked on that, I believe in August, or they, in August.
Yeah, as long as they can provide documentation that they'll be covered, I think the county wouldn't be at any liability for them to do it.
Yeah. Just like having a contractor do work and you provide us with a certificate of insurance, basically.
So do you need a motion for the, to go ahead for the grant?
Um, he made one.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded, the commissioners approve the request, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. There you go.
Thank you, sir.
I think it's great.
Thank you.
Any other patrons' concerns? If not, any approval for the claims and the payroll?
Move to accept claims and payrolls presented by the owner.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the claims and the payroll presented by the owner, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. Nothing further?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, meaning be adjourned, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. Thank you.